Okay, I'd like to bring the meeting, the Northwood School Board, March 3rd meeting, to order. We've got bills and manifests going around.
Yes.
Do we have any opening public comments? Jill?
Hope this is the right time for this.
There's a little switch on the bottom, Joe.
Can you hear me? So I hope this is the right venue for this. I actually have a request of the board. Should I ask my request now, or should I wait?
Not knowing what it is, why don't you have at it?
Yeah, okay. So the town is doing their 2016 Master Plan Survey, and we're trying to find new innovative ways to get these surveys out to a demographic that usually does not return these kinds of surveys, which is younger folks with children. What I'm asking, what I would like those people to think about, is allowing Town Hall to put the surveys, give them out to the children, so they can take home to their parents, and then have the kids bring those surveys back to school. As an incentive, I personally would like to give the winning class, the class that returns the most surveys, a pizza party or some kind of bonus for those who bring, you know, who bring the most back, so. Yeah, and that's what I'm asking, if that's appropriate, and I hope it is.
My suggestion would be that when we get to the appropriate spot on the agenda, we discuss it as a board, to give everybody else an opportunity who may have some.
That could go on your new business and address it.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Anyone else? You're all good? Okay. All right. School Board business, we have approval of our minutes from the February 18th meeting. Someone care to make a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from whatever you just said.
February 18th.
February 18th meeting.
Second.
He was gonna sneeze, and Keith seconded. Any, did you get that in the minute?
I feel it, but it's not coming.
Any questions or comments about the minutes?
I've got one thing, I can't find it right now. Unfortunately, I didn't write down. The part about the sign, it just says that we approved the money to replace the sign, and I'm pretty sure it was to fix the sign.
Repair.
Repair.
Repair, yeah, better words. I can find the number for you if you give me a minute.
On page four, line 72 or so, Chairman Breger said that she will not be at the next board meeting.
Psych!
Same thing.
I don't think that's what you said.
I, I.
You were trying to say that you won't be, after this meeting, you won't be here. I don't know if you want to correct that or not.
Yeah, no, that would be, yeah.
If I wouldn't have been here today, I'd be here today. Sorry.
That was in regards to the list that's going to be compiled by the school for genuine needs, and she was saying that she wouldn't be here when that list comes in.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Non-public?
Motion to approve non-public minutes, 21816.
Any questions or comments?
I do. So, as you all know, I got up and left. I brought with me the letter from Barrett Christina dated February 10th, 2016, that Dr. Gonoski brought into the non-public session. As far as I'm concerned, there's not one single thing in that entire letter that is non-public. It is all public information. So, that's what I'm going to do when you guys want to talk about public information and non-public. That's the second time this has been allowed in the last two months, and I don't think it should be.
That's fine. I have no problem with that letter being part of the public record. Unfortunately, you missed the discussion, which was a non-public discussion.
That may or may not be. This should have been introduced in public.
That's fine.
And I'm not going to take part in a public, in a non-public discussion about a public document.
That's fine. Happy to have you enter that into the public record now, but just so you're aware, the discussion that you missed was, in fact, a non-public discussion.
Maybe so.
Any other questions or comments on the minutes?
I have a comment on Mr. Dandaber. That letter, was that letter passed out as we were in non-public session?
Yes, it was.
We approved it going non-public session?
Yes, I approved it going non-public session, and this was passed out. This is a public document.
Well, again, I'd like a legal opinion, because anytime legal opinions, or we use our lawyer, or we get opinions from our lawyer.
Have at it.
It's addressed to us, and we did it in non-public, so I don't think that letter should be public. It ain't damaging, it ain't damaging on anything, but there's.
If you did not want it public, then you should have sealed the minutes. I waited particularly until I could see that the minutes weren't sealed, so they weren't. So after 72 hours, that's public document.
Well, I'd like an opinion on that, because you, you.
Feel free to get it.
You kinda gave us one of those opinions before, and we find out afterwards that you were wrong, so.
Feel free to get it, yeah.
Then, I'll wait, wait till we get another opinion from the.
You know what they say about opinions?
Hmm?
Everybody's got one. Okay, any other questions or comments on the non-public minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Steve.
Okay, we also have the minutes from the deliberative session.
Motion to approve the minutes from the deliberative session, and thank you very much for doing a good job.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our Assistant Superintendent's report.
Her report's on page 23. We've been working on, and have actually distributed all the flyers and magnets for the parent involvement survey. And the next step is for us to do some automated phone calls to our parents of students with disabilities, reminding them that the survey starts on April 1st, and they will be getting a copy of that in the mail. If they don't get a copy of that in the mail, they can call my office, and I'll give them the online system to use for the parent involvement survey. And I've attached some information about cost estimates for the NECC program, and that's further down on the agenda, so it's really up to you when you'd like to talk about that information.
I'd be happy moving that right up to now, which the other one was going to do it anyway for us. Tell us about it. I mean, nobody else wants to wait for it.
That's fine, unless somebody else has an issue with that, I'm fine with it.
So that estimates are on page 24. Any questions or clarification that you need?
Well, on page 23, well, whatever it is, third paragraph.
Yep.
Halfway down, is you can also look to constellations as a local and potentially more cost-effective solution to supporting the needs of our students. And just before that, you talked about a tailing out, so I mean, for me, it'd be like, if we, if we make, if we ask the superintendent to have you start developing a plan for us to get out of the NECC program and go into somebody else taking care of it, or we train somebody that's already working for us, or we hire somebody, Sal's, and the person, instead of being a NECC person that we don't control, in a sense, don't control, we would have a person that we would be in charge of, or not we, I mean, the district would be.
Right. So, let me back up to the tailing out.
All right.
The tailing out seems the most responsible and smoothest approach, because if you look on page 24, at the top of the page where it says "by grade," that's this year's enrollment.
Yep.
You're going to add one in first grade, and then if you look, your bubble, your significant needs are in fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade right now. Next year, it will be sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and then that population will start to decrease. What I would recommend is that the board allow me to start a study committee with the special education staff here in Northwood, and really map out our needs, and try to figure out what's going to work best, and then come back with those recommendations, because we have some time.
Right, but we normally, we normally have to approve that contract sometime in late March or April, don't we?
Yeah, but my recommendation using a tailing out is, you're looking at two years down to tail out.
So you might advise us to renew this year at least, and then start a study to see when we can.
Right, primarily because your biggest bubble of kids right now is in fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
And those kids are all on the autism spectrum, or have autism?
On the previous page.
Yeah, I saw that, I'm just asking.
You've got intellectual developmental delay, you've got a DD developmental delay, and then regardless of what the special education identification says in some cases, because some kids can be rather complicated, in their files from their medical doctors, they carry the ASD diagnosis.
Okay.
You don't have, I know that the question has been, is it an autism program and a behavioral program? A behavioral program usually has a high incidence of SED kids, seriously emotionally disturbed kids. You don't have any seriously emotionally disturbed students in your program. You have some students with behavioral needs based on either autism or medical conditions, but you don't have that behavioral population. Not to say there isn't misbeh, there isn't behaviors that need to be approved on, that's why the program's there. That question itself gets a little confusing to answer, but.
Okay, well, that's why I asked the questions, and I brought it up, is because I was here when we voted to start a program with NECC, and I was under the, I should say, I was under the impression, I can say that, that it was really a problem. We had, we had almost five, I think, it was four or five, coming in at that time, eight, whatever it was, six or eight years ago, that were autistic or on the spectrum. And then, over the years, and I think we all felt at the time, the board was thinking that after a few years, we would develop somebody locally that would be able to take over the program. But then, the person, the people who started the program from the SAU were gone, and then you came, and I think the board said, well, let Scott take care of it and get us to a point where, I mean, I'm feeling that it's time, that we should be thinking, is there a way to save money, you know, and still keep some type of a program here?
I did calculate, no, 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 separate from that, just from my own knowledge last week when I was working on this, I did calculate the cost potentially if you had, if you didn't have the program.
Oh, yeah, good, that's good to tell us, I think that's good.
And it was somewhere around $545,000, so.
What's this, then? That's in the packet? I thought that's what.
No, that's an analysis of what it would, I was asked for a cost analysis, on how much do we pay for the NECC program, and how much would we pay if we did it in-house?
I thought that was the number of words.
That's what I gave you.
Okay.
Right? So, it turns out to be a couple thousand dollars difference. And again, my estimate, you know, I'm estimating a master's degree, and then I had to figure out, well, if I was to have a master's degree with a specialist certification, how long would that take? So I took myself an example, and how long that took. So that's an M plus nine for salary, and then, of course, when we budget, we're going to budget for a family plan, and then the PD, and then the training costs. So, right now, it comes out, you know, a couple thousand dollars difference using what the assumptions that I used to estimate. Now, those could come in lower, they probably couldn't come in higher.
So what was the 500,000?
That was if we had a place.
Oh, oh.
If we couldn't meet the students' needs within the building, what would it, what would the potential be to send them to a program that could meet their needs? I didn't include that there, you didn't ask me for that, but I wanted to know the information.
So this doesn't include the cost of the NECC tutors either? I mean, that's all off the books.
Right, well, your NECC tutors are basically, we call them NECC tutors, but they're one-on-ones, and you'll see a lot of kids with autism spectrum disorder require the services of one-on-ones, that's really a cash even kinda, you pay for them.
Right.
In your regular operating budget.
Gotcha, yep. I suppose, I just want to make sure.
We did start that program years ago because of what we were expecting to be out of district costs if we had four or five students coming in. So, even back then, it was cost-effective to be here. It really was. I believe it really was cost-effective, because of just what he said, if we sent people out versus keeping them here.
That's never been the argument, though, Dave. No one's ever argued with what you just said.
No one argued that?
No one has ever argued that what you just said is true.
I've been at budget meetings where they, where we argued about that.
It's far more cost-effective to have them in-house.
Well, I've been at budget meetings.
I've never heard that argument.
Well, you weren't at the budget meetings.
I guess so.
I was.
Okay, so.
You were, and I brought it up six or eight years ago, but anyway.
Let's just focus on the question at hand. The question at hand that was raised last time was not, not, not whether or not it's more cost-effective to have the children here in the building versus out of the building. The question is whether it's better, and I would encourage the board to not simply focus on the dollars alone, but there's other, there's other factors that need to be considered in addition to the dollars, but is it better to outsource the running of that program through NECC or a similar program versus us fully doing it ourselves in-house? That's the issue.
Yeah.
So let's just focus on the issue.
Well, then, I would like to make a motion that we, us as superintendent, to have a special ed director, start with a team or a survey of what he feels he needs to, going forward, where we could go from NECC to a different company, or see if there is a different company out there, or go with somebody that we could probably bring in-house, would be a Northwood employee versus a management person from an outside company. Am I saying that right? I mean, you comfortable with?
You want me to assemble a team to study the feasibility?
Yeah, okay. That's better than what I said.
That's perfectly fine.
One, is there?
Hold on a second, there's a motion, would somebody like to second it?
Oh, second. Sorry, go ahead. In looking at that, are you also looking at, because I think you mentioned another program?
Mm-hmm.
So you'll look at that, like, NECC versus whatever else is out there at this point in time, because like Karen said, I agree with that, you know, it may make a $2,000 difference in having our own teachers, but the education and the ongoing education and everything they get through the NECC program, or another program like it, to me is well worth that $2,000 to have it stay through something like that.
Also, may I just add to that? My proposal is that we also have a cost-effective reasoning if we sent all of them out of district to a private facility all over the state or in New England, which we may have to do, and we've done in the past. So maybe, so we could see two figures, or two comparisons.
Scott, if we were to take this in, fully in-house, and they were Northwood School employees as opposed to people employed through NECC, do those employees become part of one of our collective bargaining agreements?
Well, just, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I had my hand up.
You did.
We're only talking about one person.
It doesn't matter.
No, you're not.
Is that person?
Well, I'm talking about, we pay the NECC program for one person, 100.
No, you don't.
Okay.
So here's how it's structured, it's going to get a little confusing.
It's all right.
NECC gives you the full-time instructor.
Okay.
But they also give you two days a week of a BCBA, a board certified behavior analyst.
Okay.
All right? So that's included in the cost of your NECC contract. Mrs. Breger, if we created an instructor position at the Northwood School, it would clearly fall under the collective bargaining agreement. The BCBA work, I already use constellations for BCBA services for the SAU, so we would still, I mean, I do know one employee in the SAU who actually is about to finish their BCBA work and certification. If we have the opportunity to hire in-house for a board certified behavior analyst, that would be more cost-effective, just because they're much more expensive than an instructor.
But regardless of what the positions are, positions that would need to be hired as a result of bringing this program fully in-house would, in fact, fall under one of the contracts.
The teaching position with the BCBA would not.
Okay. Because I think that's another important factor that needs to be considered in terms of.
Unless the, unless there was some adjustment to the recognition clause in the collective bargaining agreement.
Is there any possibility of sharing responsibilities across the SAU using school? I hope they're not going to go for it. It's not a lot of care, but it'd be a good thing.
Sorry.
So prior to your arrival, we tried that, and it didn't really have to do with the boards, it had more to do with the student population. We did take potentially two students for the summer program from another district, not in the SAU. The issue with that is that then there was a need in Northwood, and the program was capped at eight, and I sort of had to excuse those students to make sure that we were taking care of the students in our own school. So you're always going to, whether you work in Nottingham, Stratford, or Bedford, you're always going to have that challenge of what if there's a need?
One follow-up question, the NECC contract cost, how's that? That's not per student, or anything like that, right?
Total for the, for the whole year, year-round.
Whether we have zero or eight.
Right.
Right. So which is why, what I'm talking about, a feasibility study and a tail-out approach, if you look at the census, you can see, my reasoning there, is it's a lot easier to start either a new program or an in-district program when you have a reduced population. It will grow again. We know that our autism rates in the United States are growing, and we know that our numbers right now are 1 in 60 have some form of spectrum disorder, so, but if the opportunity comes, you can see it, right? When the, if you're going to do it, when the time would be.
If we do, then, if we do in-house versus the NECC program, does that limit us any, by having other students come in from, if, say we were down to like three by chance, does it limit us that we're in-house versus having the NECC program in there, limit us taking in tuition students or whatever from other districts or other schools or anything?
I mean, the only limitation I can see would be a perceptual limitation, and the NECC is so highly regarded and respected, and have so many programs across the state, that potentially somebody who wants to place into a public school-based autism program may not choose it because it doesn't carry that brand. I mean, I mean, that's.
What are the other schools in our district doing? Do they use the NECC program?
No, actually, Stratford doesn't have the population to support it. Nottingham right now doesn't have the population to support it, although there seems to be a bubble forming, coming in. And actually, for, so what I do there is, what used to be in this SAU was a combination of BCBA work. Nottingham really preferred constellations, Stratford and Northwood use NECC. This year, based on cost savings and comparable services, I switched to constellations for all those kids outside of the NECC program that need behavior counsel, right? To constellations because it was, you know, considerably cheaper, and we got an extra day of service. So we went from four days across the SAU to five days across the SAU, and then a cost savings on top of that. So they're already contracted through our federal funds, so if we have that need, regardless of NECC or not, we have that in place.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, are there any other questions or discussion about it?
Could you read the motions? I know what it is.
Motion to have, to assemble a team, to have Assistant Superintendent Running assemble a team to study the feasibility to go forward, to look at NECC, the NECC program versus another program.
Thank you.
Is that right?
I don't know, I didn't make the motion.
I think that's right, right?
Any other questions, discussion, comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Good. Anything else that you have?
Thank you, Scott. No.
Any other questions for Assistant Superintendent?
Yeah, for Cole Brown for next year, students that will need some special education needs, we put in a couple that, there was always arguments about whether they were coming or not, but are there any extras, is two or three, what is the, we put in the budget for two.
Are you talking for next year?
Yeah.
You.
Next year's budget, we're gonna have, we're gonna find out if it gets approved or not, so I'm just curious.
I think, I think Mr. Ruth, it would probably be smart of me not to answer that question right now, to have me go back and look at the ins and outs.
Okay.
And I know we've added students, but I haven't gone through to see if we've lost any students, so I can come back with that, the next board, we're going to give you a projection.
That'd be good, thank you.
You do have some other issues going on right now, that are probably for non-public, that I might discuss if we go into non-public, if not, it's not a problem that's going to go away, so you can wait till next time if that works for the board, too.
If I may, since I mentioned Cole Brown, how many students have you signed for? Did you just sign for somebody else tonight?
This evening, I signed for one new student.
And we were told by our BA that we had six, so now we're up to seven above what we budgeted for.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Principal's report?
Thank you, it's not in your packet, but I handed out a copy to everyone, since we had the vacation weekend, I was not available. I only had one school day between the last meeting and the vacation week starting, so I handed out the report to everybody. I won't go through the entire thing, and I'll have, you can have a chance to read it, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things on here. There's a section about some co-teaching, or some team teaching that grade seven and special ed are doing, that they say is much more beneficial to students right now, they're trying some things to give students some extra attention, and they say it's working out really well, but it's new, so they're just looking at it and having some success already. Grade four, Ms. Beck told classes doing an Iditarod sled dog race, they're following the mushers, and they're doing some math lessons and some science lessons, and it's a project that she's very, very excited about, and the kids are too, so I can give you an update when that comes through. Next week, we're really excited about Read Across America Week, March 7th through 11th. We have, thanks to our literacy committee, we have things planned for every day of the week, and the schedule is on there. Students are doing different things each day in celebration of that whole week, and one thing I want to bring to your attention is the guest author visits, which are happening on Thursday. Invitations have gone out through students and through school, but I did want to take this opportunity to personally invite the board members and the SAU personnel, if you would like an opportunity to read, we would certainly love to have you in, and you can email Ms. Turco, she's actually here tonight with some literacy committee members, but you could email Ms. Turco if you're interested and would like to set up an appointment to be a guest reader on Thursday, there are certainly classes that would love to have you. Lots of things going on every day with that, and a lot of work being done with our literacy committee, and all the members are mentioned here in this, in this report, Ms. Turco, Ms. Oxnard, Ms. Mantel, Ms. Cronin, Ms. Fredette, Ms. Smith, Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Harvey, and Ms. Moore. I'll put in a lot of work for this particular week coming up. And we also have a little bit more from the literacy committee coming on March 17th. We will be hosting a well-known author, David Ira Rotenberg. He's the author of a couple of children's books, and there's going to be a performance that day as well here, so that's something that students are looking forward to. One action item on the bottom of the front page, we did get our, every few months, we get a Target check donation, and we've talked about them before, I did just receive one for $126.19 that would be unanticipated revenue, as they always are. That would be unanticipated revenue as they always are. But I would like to ask the board to consider supporting this donation and allowing us to utilize it for the eighth grade trip. The letter that accompanies the check, which is on the very back of your packet, does say to use it for what you need, turn it into books, field trips, art supplies, and some other things. So it does specify that it could be utilized for field trips. And I would like consideration given to be able to let us use it for the eighth grade trip since that is such a costly endeavor this year.
Would it be used for, we had talked in the past about certain kids might be needing more help than others. Would it be used in that vein?
It absolutely could be used in that vein. I have a little more information about that a little bit later in the report, but it absolutely could be used in that vein.
So is, you know, I would make a motion to approve that as long as the money is used for the families that needed a little help.
Motion to approve $126.19 to be used for the eighth grade class trip for the families that need a little bit more help.
Second.
Any questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. That would be, that will be very well received. The Artisan Residence Program, I have an update! Yay! Finally, an update! We've gone through three different Artisan Residence options. The first two ultimately didn't pan out because one of them didn't have the time in this current school year to be able to offer to us. And the other one, I think, did call back and say that there was a family conflict, but there also was a big distance to be traveled. But Mr. O is still plugging away at it and he does have another artist who is willing to come in in May. His name is Hans Specker. He's from New Hampshire. I didn't get to attach the pictures because the pictures weren't printing out for some reason. I couldn't get the attachment to print. But they're 3D panels with glass and metal and they have geometric shapes. They're really pretty cool. They can be seen on this website. And we'll be having a meeting with that artist hopefully next week to try to see if we can't formalize a program, given the amount of money that we have to spend and the amount of time that we would be able to have the person work with our students.
I have a question first.
I think I happened to see that gentleman on TV last night on Channel 9. If it was the same one or not, but it was geometric shapes, he was using...
I don't know.
I don't know if it was the same one that was on TV.
He was on Channel 9 last night and I can't remember the name.
Quite a few times in the last couple of days.
They did a chronicle, they did a chronicle on that gentleman. I can find out if it's the same gentleman or not.
I guess my question would be, we have a nice stained glass panel out in the front door that was done at an Artisan Residence years ago. So maybe as part of a project, maybe there's something that would be like a piece of art, like usually that's what we have.
Yes, that's what we're looking to do, is something sustainable, something that's in a public space, something that's visible and longstanding.
Great, thank you.
So I'll keep you posted on that. Hopefully this one works out. Eighth grade transition information is in there. You can read that. There's a Washington DC trip update, which I had been saying I would be getting from Ms. Rush. We've had 16 fundraisers this year for the eighth grade class. This class has been working like crazy and so have the parents. We have a huge supportive group of parents that have been giving countless hours to supporting this trip. So we're very, very excited. I have, and this wouldn't be for public consumption, but I do have a list of every single student and the fundraising that has been earned. And there's at least a couple of kids, one particular student who's earned $695 of the $699 for the trip. So it really is remarkable. There's a core group of kids that have really been trying so hard to raise the money that they need. And it's been very enjoyable, I think, for a lot of the kids and a lot of the families. So there will be 45 students going. There's 44 listed here and there's one more on the cusp. And there's gonna be a total of seven chaperones that are going. Ms. Rush has been talking about wanting to, the funding requests that now we would like to share with you all. There's one request that she would like to make and we've been working with Mr. Rooning on this. Funding for a hundred dollar upcharge for a double room for a student with special needs, as well as one additional chaperone who will be the student's one-on-one. That's something that we've been working on and are looking to potentially post as a position. And she did submit her fundraising log to me, which breaks down what every student has earned. And the piece at the bottom is the one I was mentioning. There's at least three students who could use some financial support. Amongst the three students, they still owe between $1,100 and $1,200. So certainly that target money would be put toward that, that sum of money for those three students in particular. Those are ones we know about. Those are ones whose parents have said, this trip is a hardship. This is something that we're really struggling with. They've done a little bit of fundraising when they could. There's one or two other students who, we haven't heard much from the families to say this is too much, but they have registered their students. So it's unclear whether they're just gonna plan to pay, you know, the five or 600 left at the end or whether they're gonna end up saying, I can't, I can't swing that right now. I'm gonna have to pull my kid out of the trip. So Ms. Rush is still trying to work on that to support those families and find out where, where they're at.
So right now you know of $1,100?
Yeah, just about, between, between 11 and 12, but...
Could we back up a little bit? So you need a hundred dollar upcharge, so that's a hundred dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then the $799, you need that too?
Yes.
And you want that how?
Well, part of that, I've been working with Mr. Rooning to see if that can be partially funded through some special ed support as a chaperone. But that's based on the need for a specific one-to-one chaperone for a specific student that will be attending the trip.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you right, then really we're looking for right at $2,000.
Yep, just about $2,000 to $2,100.
Okay. And were you looking for the board to use school money for that or just looking for ways to come up with the money?
Well, you, you have mentioned before that there's potentially school money and we could come up with some sort of a wish list for potentially needed items. This I would put at the top of that list right now before anything else.
All right, so I'll, I'll see what I can do for getting some donations. I'm, I'm, the only money that I would even entertain the board is, is the, because of the handicap. That I understand. When is the trip?
The trip is June 2nd through June 5th.
Tim, when you say the handicap, you mean the eight, the $900 for the double room and the additional shop?
Double room for stu-, I'm sorry, I have to say handicap. I should say special needs.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's...
I'm, I'm looking at that money. I'm, I'm more interested in the school, whether it's the SAU or us in that regard. The others, I'm looking, I'll go out and see if I can collect some money from town folk to get that 11 or some part of that $1,100. To me, it's two different issues. I don't know if that's right to look at it that way, but I do.
Understood.
June what?
June 2nd through 5th.
And when?
When do we pay back?
The pay, the payment deadline, I believe, is the first week of April.
Okay, so we have a month at least.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's the first week of April is the payment deadline.
Thank you.
Not to switch topics, but that is the same artist that was on Chronicle last night.
It was? Oh, good. He seemed kinda neat, actually.
Yeah, he did.
In an oddball artist way.
It'd be great if he did some for us.
He won't meet the haircut policy though.
So with that $900, do we want to wait to see if there was something within the special education fund or is that something we wanted to make a motion on tonight?
Well, I, I, I think that we should put it off for two weeks and see if Mr. Rooning comes up with some innovative way of dealing with it. And if not, then I think we should talk about it again. He wants to say something, I can tell.
Yeah. There's an additional cost that I've already covered, which if the...
Additional, above and beyond what's called out here, you mean?
Correct. So my philosophy, and you can adopt your own philosophy.
Thank you.
You're welcome to do that. But for the special education portion, since the person that's likely to be the chaperone will be an hourly employee, I've already calculated the cost of the hours and the, and the overnight stipend. My feeling was that, you know, from an equity standpoint, if we're, if we're, for the chaperone, if we're drawing this out of student activities and fundraising, then to be equitable, that should come out of student activities and fundraising too. But if they're short the money, I mean, we can definitely find the money for the $900.
So wait a second.
Yeah.
So somebody going as a chaperone for one-on-one for, you said, the second through the fifth, paid at an hourly rate, it's only $800?
No, 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 no. There's, there are costs in this line.
There's salaries.
There are costs that are not included in this report.
So this, this $800 on here is the cost for the trip?
For the trip.
You are from special ed, are covering the compensation requirements associated with this person. And so for those of you not familiar with payroll requirements, this person, I'm assuming, is working around the clock as a one-on-one with this student?
Nope, because the student won't have the services and the one-on-one while the student is asleep. You have...
Who, we're paying for somebody else to be in that?
No, instead of four students, there's going to be two students.
Okay.
And we're getting dangerously close to a private conversation.
I just want to, compensation-wise, I just want to make sure we're not getting in any, I, I don't care who it is. I just want to make sure that we're, we're truly compensating correctly so as not to be in trouble with the Department of Labor because we didn't appropriately compensate for travel time and all that other stuff. Okay. That's it. That's all.
It will be a hefty pay week.
It absolutely will be.
Rightfully earned.
Yes.
So thank you for your consideration of, of all that. We can review that again in March. And I can update you at that time if there's any more detail from Ms. Rush, based on the recent fundraisers that we've done. Performing arts update, just the productions are coming up, March 22nd and March 23rd, dinner theater and the dessert theater. So there's certainly information on that. If you want to mark your calendars, we'd love to invite everybody to attend. It's always a great show. And also the Glee Club sang the National Anthem, if anybody had a chance to catch it, at the staff versus eighth grade game. It was awesome. They sounded so great and so much better than they did when they first came out. So that, that really is a group that's working really well. The activity stipend reallocation, I don't know if Mr. Ruth has an update from the meeting that we had this afternoon that you want to mention or not?
Yeah, I'll wait till you finish everything and I'll bring it up.
Okay. There's an athletics update. We finished our winter season, very successful winter season. Four basketball teams competing, plus the cheering squad, 42 students altogether. They all did an excellent job. You know, we're in transition years for a couple of teams. I did want to point out that the A-Team girls finished the season 13-1 and did bring home the second league championship in girls' sports this year. It happened an hour or so before I got to last meeting on the, on the 18th, but I didn't know the results of the game, so I couldn't mention it then. But it's just awesome. It's another team championship banner that's gonna go up. The girls are so pumped. This is a, this is a really, really great group of girl athletes that really gel well together in a variety of different sports. So we'll see what they do for softball this year. But it was excellent. And the, the game yesterday was great. The basketball game was so much fun. It was, it was just awesome to have a group of the staff members playing against a group of the students. It was well officiated despite some of the controversy that we experienced. It was great. And we really do look forward to doing more of those. I think all of us walked off the court thinking, oh my gosh, we should do one of these every month because it was so much fun for all of us. So that'll be something to look forward to. But many thanks to everybody who participated in supporting that event. It was, it was great. It was awesome. I did put a note in here to say thank you to Chairwoman Brigger. I wanted to say thank you for the two years of service to the board since I've started here, to Karen Brigger. She certainly has been a super strong advocate for student needs and has always and will continue to always hold our school to a very high standard. And I, I really do appreciate that because it's very helpful to us. Building and grounds, there's just a few things from Mr. Tom in there that you can read. Spectrum signs is at the bottom. We do hope to have the sign completed within two weeks. It's broken and that's why there's no message on it. It's not because we haven't put a message on. We no longer have the capacity to put any letters on that side. So we thought we might be able to get it fixed over the vacation. Ms. Smith told us that wouldn't be possible, so within the next two weeks, it should be completely finished. And we will have signage on there and it will stay up on there. And then the technology update is on there from Mr. Rooning.
Traveler's Company's was in to inspect the boilers, pressure boiler one. Pressure relief valve has a small drip, needs to be replaced, haven't we?
Yes, I believe that's been done.
Any other issues in the school?
No, not anything. The, the only thing that we're looking at right now is the Aqua Specialties for the water samples. They found one water fountain that they were questioning the water on and the recommendation has been made to replace the water fountain to a more economical water fountain that needs less refrigeration so that it would be a safer type of water fountain. And we've actually asked them to pull a water sample from another water fountain in a different hallway, the 78 hallway, because those two water fountains were put in at the same time. So if the 78 is questionable, which wasn't tested earlier, if the 78 water fountain is questionable and if we have to replace one, then we would opt to request replacing both of them. That's why we haven't done anything with the one that we know needs to be replaced. We just want to see if, if we need to do two of them, we'll do two of them at the same time.
Are we checking the water?
Yes, they're doing water samples. That's what we're doing. We've done it three times.
Checking for...
Checking for whatever contaminants in the water that they feel are unfit.
But we get our water from across the street in a well run by the water district, so we should have notified them if we have any problems with our water.
Yeah, there's a lot of people, there's a few people that are on this email. I don't know if the people that you're thinking of with the water district are on that email as well.
Please check it out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check for that.
His name is Jacob Spire.
I, I guess what, I'm...
Jacob Spire.
Are, are we saying there's an issue with the water fountain because there's a mechanical issue or is there a health issue with the water fountains? And if a health issue, why are they still accessible to be used by children?
The one that is faulty is not accessible. It's been turned off. There's been no water to it since we've been doing this testing.
What was the contamination?
I don't...
Don't know if there is.
I can see if I have the report copy with me.
So if we're suspicious of other water fountains because they were installed at the same time and, and the water's coming from the same place, through the same pipes and that are the same age, why would we not be proactive and stop access to the other fountains as well?
That has not been the recommendation of the people testing the water. They have said that it was not something where we needed to shut off all water access to all the water fountains because there are water fountains that we have tested that have come out, have come out fine and clean and appropriate and safe. They're questioning one water fountain.
Could be a mechanical thing in that fountain.
I don't know. I just texted my husband and told him the kids shouldn't be drinking out of the water fountain, just for what it's worth as a parent. If I knew this as a parent...
For cooking and everything, you know.
Well, at least cooking, it, it comes to boiling and...
Depends what the contaminant is.
Exactly, so...
If it's bacteria, boiling's fine. If it's heavy metal, boiling's not gonna do anything.
The results from one of the water fountains merits discussion. The fountain located to the right of them, 123, came back with copper levels at a certain level and lead of a certain level. According to NHDES, the action level for copper is at this particular level, so this result is nearly double the action level. The action level for lead, so this result is right at the action level. There should be discussion around retesting the water to determine if this result could have resulted from sampling error and further steps that the water district should take.
Well, Tim brings up a really good point in terms of the water use for other things. I think we need to be very careful that we're not just looking at one little thing that, you know, this, you know, I, I, not to make bigger issue, but I mean, if you look at something like Flint, Michigan and what happened with the town and how it's impacting the school and everything they're having to do. And I don't want to be, I, I wouldn't want to be in a situation where parents are in here screaming at the board because nobody communicated or nobody looked into or whatever. I, I, you know, it's, it's the water and I think it's pretty serious when we're dealing with young children.
We should be contacting Jake and hitting Jake over here.
He's on here. We have a response from Jake. I just got a voicemail from Jacob Spire. He feels it's worth retesting the suspect faucet. I will coordinate this with Tom and the school within a week. So he has made a recommendation to retest the suspect water fountain.
When is, when has the other faucet, the published been tested last?
Like, should we be testing more places than within the school? I guess would be the question is like, like just test everything since we're testing.
Well, to me, right now, it sounds like we have a problem with one machine, but the water everywhere else has been fine. But let's make a, I'll make a motion to shut off all water fountains.
Well, I guess when was the last time it was tested? That's the thing too.
If it was, if it was two weeks ago, then fine, right?
Right, yeah.
And I can, I can, anytime you test the water and you come up with a high or you think is not a good reading, you ought, you should automatically retest it. That's my experience in the past.
And that's what they're doing.
You say, wait, and you know, you find out that they do. They say, well, I used a bottle that I shouldn't have used before I tested it the first time. Yeah, it happens a lot.
I, I don't...
I don't want to panic everybody, but fine.
Or do I, but the only thing that bothers me in the whole conversation is we're gonna retest in a week. I'd call Mr. Jacob Spire back and say, we'd like to retest tomorrow.
We're waiting for the results. We've already retested. We're waiting on them for the results.
Then I take back what I said.
And will you find with that one that's already shut off and then the rest, the kids, uh...
Is there a way to expedite tests? I don't know. I'm just asking.
I think they have to send them out. I asked that.
Five, they have to tomorrow.
Can we, can we hand carry it to the testing? Where is that, Loudon?
One right down, 125.
This one right here in town too.
In town too.
Is it the enviro fab place?
Oh, no, that's 125, but there's a...
Aqua Specialties. That's who's doing it.
He don't test them.
Yeah, but they don't, they don't test it right there. Now they send them out.
125 or whatever the...
But I guess the question too is, was this just spot testing of, you know, certain spots and does the kitchen need to be tested and...
Well, when was the last time? I'd like to know when the last time everything was, like when was, when do we test it?
I'll find out on that.
Is it regularly or is it, is this what we generally do?
Probably test.
This is the first time it's been done that I know of in two years.
Okay, so we don't do it regularly then. That's probably something we should do.
Okay, let's move on. Anything else for the principal? All right, moving on then. Policies, we had, do you want to take?
Yeah, there was a couple of questions from...
What, timeout?
I'm sorry, I was looking to see if I had anything, but on jumping on for the principal, we had, two weeks ago, we had stipends for...
we had, two weeks ago, we had stipends for, some additional stipends for after-school curriculum events, clubs. I met with them today, and then pretty much kind of understood the problem, how they came about, you know, and unfortunately, Wendy wasn't here for the first half of it, and when she explained things to me today, that if she had been here at the right time, everything, we probably would have had no problem with any of it. And I'll read them off. A Pokemon club, Felicia Labella, eleven hours for $2.75. She has, in the past, as an administrator, run clubs and never got stipends for it as an administrator, feeling that the kids were coming to her and were talking about Pokemon and clubs, and they have cards and trading cards, and that they could do something after school for games. She was, she was like-
Interrupt me for a second?
Yeah?
Sorry. I don't think, to me personally, I don't think I need an explanation of the clubs. I think that the clubs were perfectly explained. My issue was that the committee had not met per the CBA. So, if you're telling me that the committee has now met per the CBA, and that we're going with the CBA, I'm personally ready to move forward and-
Well, no, there were other issues. That was certainly one of the issue. The other issue, which is still an issue, is that we've advertised clubs to the children prior to having the approval for said clubs.
I think that was the only club, and I was, that was, that's what I was trying to explain.
Um, have we appro, did we approve the yoga club?
The only other one was, pardon me?
Yes. Did we approve the yoga club?
Yes, we did. That was on the original list.
Yeah, and there is one here, there's a new art club. I don't know if there was anything. I know he's a brand-new teacher, and when we did the clubs last spring, last fall, we suggested, "We do have some money left over. You have, you've got like ten or eleven new people coming into the building. Allow them at least a chance to see if there was something they may want to do." And the art club, an art teacher came up with one for an art club. But, the Pokemon club, that was the one that was advertised, and that's what I was saying. Lisa had done it all in the past, and had always wanted it, and then found out that-
So, you're saying the club kind of did exist?
It could be a club that you couldn't get paid for.
It was going to run as a free activity anyway. She was running it as a support group for kids who had come to her with a proposal, wanting to manage their own safe, appropriate, fair Pokemon play.
Well, the way it was presented to the board at the last meeting was as a stipend club position.
Correct, and this is where, this is where this information, I could have shared it last week with you. She was going to run that anyway, as it was, because as she had been an administrator, she never got money for that stuff. And as a guidance counselor, she offered support groups often for kids during school and after school. But, when we started looking at some other clubs that had been brought to our attention, that we didn't approve and didn't move forward with, because we needed to talk to the board and the club committee, it was brought up that, well, if she's running this one anyway, now that she's in the CBA, let's bring that club into this collection, because if she's running that free of charge, she shouldn't be. And the club committee and the CBA group wanted to support her and said, "Let's pull her into this other list, because we want to make sure if these other people are getting compensated and there's a discussion about reallocating some funds, that she now be included, when she previously wouldn't have been, because she wasn't covered under the CBA."
I'll just, Pokemon club, Lisa Labella, eleven hours, $2.75. A yearbook assistant, Kim Clemmons, eight hours at $200. A yearbook advisor, Megan Mantell, which is an additional stipend of nine hours. She's already, for $225, she's already put in more than enough hours, and the original stipend was $5.50. Art club, which would be brand-new from our art teacher, Yesagon O., that no one gets to, twenty-five hours at $6.25. The snowshoe club assistant, which would be new. We normally have, in my experience, probably around twenty, twenty-two kids that sign up for snowshoe club. This year, they had forty-two. I made the recommendation that, that's something on the very first day, if we came, and we could have got that approved. Wouldn't even been a problem if, even if our administrator had come and said, "Hey, this is what they need." We could have, as a board, said, "We don't need a special meeting to approve that." But, and they have, even though there is no snow most of the time we see it. I did ask. They did go out, actual snowshoeing the four times, and then what they do is if they can't, if their snow isn't good enough, they actually take them out in the cold hiking. So, then they hike around, so they're getting used to, for the same reason, they're getting out in the cold and they're working out. And another new one would be the, I'm sorry, this, yeah, the last one, a seventh-grade advisor for Becky Rush, twelve hours at $300. And that would be new, but that was like a proposal to actually get started on the seventh grade is to get them going, and then as we work through, as they work through the summer on their fundraising, that would be a position for those few hours that could get that program going. So, when they hit eighth grade, our eighth-grade advisor, they'd already be started on it. So, the total comes out to $2,000, and that's money that is in the stipend line.
So, I second it. Are you making a motion?
I'll make that motion, yeah, as I read it. Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are your policies?
Hi, before we start our policies, I want to let you know that I asked the question about a gender identity staff policy. I haven't gotten an answer yet. I know that was one of the questions last time. And I did go over with the School Boards Association that the last policy update had a fair amount of grammatical errors in it, and they took that feedback. And then I asked Mrs. Gedkert to please try to follow all the changes, because there was quite a few, and to please pay attention to the spelling and grammar, because typically she doesn't have to do that as the policies come through. So, we're hoping we have everything. If we don't have everything in these policies, I think there'll be a reduced amount of information to add, and we should be able to bring them back clean next time.
Okay, so these are now, now they're just going out for first?
Right, I made changes, and we're putting them back on for first.
Can I make a motion that we approve all the policies for first reading, as presented in our agenda, instead of going through every one of them, or?
I'll second it.
You're at an interesting spot, actually, because you're going to, you can do this. It's a sitting board. You're going to potentially have a different sitting board for the second reading. So, that actually might make sense, and then I can throw them back in the packet, and then the next board can look at them, and-
Okay.
Awesome.
So, you're saying we're okay to make the motion and move forward?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, some of these ones that we've already looked at, the only addition is the gender identity.
Or some spelling and grammar. There was a lot.
There were a lot of changes we made last time.
I mean, when I got back to the office, went over to Nancy, it was, there was more than usual.
There were substantial changes that were made to these. Okay, any other questions or comments?
I have a question, just on one of the policies. I don't know if it's for first reading or second reading, but I wanted to ask for the policy JIKK, the Safety and Violence Prevention. There are, once you get to, I think it starts mostly at number nine, the investigative procedures. The term principal is used throughout the entire document, and I would ask that we look at changing that to principal or designee or administrator, because the majority, at least in our school, the majority of the bullying investigative process happens with the assistant principal. So, I don't want us to be obligated to have this be a one-role job if we don't apply it to that role as a normal protocol.
I thought it would, should be administration.
Yeah.
Scott, did you have something to say?
I don't, well, the way the law is written leaves the ultimate responsibility for the bullying investigation to make sure that it's followed through on to the building principal. To change the policy to have the ultimate responsibility fall to anybody, and I'm just saying, the nuts and bolts of doing the investigation, it could conflict with the law. The policy, every time I've seen it written, whether it's from a sample or not, it talks about the building principal, not the designee. And it doesn't require that the building principal do that. The building principal can designate that to her assistant or his assistant.
One line in here says, "The principal shall develop a process or plan to protect a student," blah, 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 blah. So, yeah, in most cases, a student, a principal has the authority to delegate that, but you can never delegate away the responsibility of the final.
You can never delegate away, you can delegate the responsibility, but you can't delegate the accountability.
Okay, that's the one. That was a good one. I remember.
Thank you.
I can't remember what class I learned that in back in the sixties, but I realize something like that.
Well, and I think that was how, it's not the accountability, the way that it's reading, though. It's not the accountability, it's the investigation and everything, and that's what I, that's how I was reading it, is that, you know, to me, yes, the ultimate accountability is to the building principal, but the way that this reads, it, the principal has to do everything, but that, in most of them, most buildings, I think, that you go into, the principal's not the one that handles all of this. It's the assistant.
I see a lot of the principal should initiate an investigation into the act, you know, and that seems appropriate.
There are places where the principal shall report to the parents, the principal shall file this, the principal shall complete the investigation, and the principal's not doing the investigation in most of the cases.
But, you're delegating.
I am, but I'm just looking at this as a potential challenge from somebody who says, "It says the principal will do it. I don't want to talk to you if the assistant principal's the one that calls."
Well, you are the appeal. You are the appeal.
Um, can I ask you a question? These are board policies, right?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what, if any, input the principal has in these before they get to this point. I thought there was a committee that was kind of going through these, and I thought the principal was part of that committee. I think if there's questions about the policies in terms of how they're actually executed in the building and whose responsibility they are, that's not, I don't think, for this board to discuss. I think if you've got questions about it, you can address it with the SAU administration offline. I think if the board has questions about the policies, then it's for us here at this meeting to discuss and potentially revise. I would remind everybody of what Mr. Runing started with by saying, "This policy is written in a way to comply with the law. Potentially making such changes could impact our compliance with the law," and I think we have to think of that first and foremost. Unfortunately, not all the laws in this state are written in a way I think that we would all love, but we all have a responsibility to figure out how to comply with it, and I think that seems to be the issue here.
And I think we, you know, and I can just do a little research and see what other places have written, too, because I can't imagine that I'm the only board member that had brought this up to say that, you know, it just seems weird that one person is doing everything, and so, that's what I'll do, is I'll just do a little research, and this is going out for first reading, correct?
Correct.
This is the third time it's going out for first reading?
Something like that.
Any other questions, any other questions or comments?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, superintendent's report.
All right, just a couple of things. The personnel report, I handed out to you. There were actually two coaching positions. One was Mike Briger, baseball, for $1,200 per the CBA, and Ed Ladue, softball, $1,200 per CBA.
Can I make the request that it's made in two separate motions, please?
Make a motion to approve Mike Briger as that baseball coach, $1,200 per CBA.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, um, thanks.
Make a motion to present, present Ed Ladue as a softball coach, $1,200 per CBA.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Comment, as I make all the time, I would like that our principal would be informed of anybody volunteering to be an assistant coach for either of these teams, and that we make sure that they do get approved as a volunteer go through the process.
Your athletic director is also fully aware of your requests and concerns.
Thank you.
That was part of our interview process with both people for the spring season.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do you have something with this?
No.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
The other piece I have to bring to your attention is the ballot for the upcoming vote has been printed, and on Article Six, there was, it was typed incorrectly. It reads, "The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation by a 124 to zero vote."
Right!
I know it's a large budget committee, but it's not that large. So, it was a 12 to zero vote. So, these ballots have already been printed.
We don't do anything with printing the ballots. They will put out-
That's correct.
Something else, right?
That's correct. But, I did call Gordon Graham, our attorney, and ask him, you know, what the record, legal recommendation is on that. He called the Secretary of State, and there are many incorrect ballots like this that they're dealing with right now throughout the state. On this particular ballot, this is the ballot, this is the article that is $10,000, up to $10,000 to be placed in Building Capital Improvement, Capital Reserve. And the feedback that I got legally was that it does not invalidate the article. So, it's fine the way it is. You've got two things that you can do. The absentee ballots have already gone out like this, have already been mailed out. What we could do, your two choices are leave it as is, and it's not going to invalidate the article, or we can hand-write, cross out, and hand-write 12-0 as a vote on each of the ballots that is remaining. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight, and the recommendation from the attorney was leave it the way it is.
Crossing it out almost looks more suspicious than 124 to zero.
So, we should make a motion to approve it?
It's, it's, it's still a unanimous vote, although it's, like I said, 124 to zero.
So, I don't, I don't want to hand-write anything. I will be there all day if there's any questions. I would check with Hal Kreider and see if that he would give us permission to make a little outside of the main voting thing, but outside in that hallway, make a letter just stating that a mistake was made, and, you know, please note that it's supposed to be 12 instead of 120.
I know, I know there's really specific laws about what can be in the room where the most-
In the room is a problem.
Yeah, no, so I recognize that one, but I'm going to ask this question anyway. Is it possible that, that some sort of letter or notice of some sort could actually be inside, so when you're handed your ballot, you could also be handed? Because it's not, it's just indicating that there was an, I don't know, I'm just-
And I don't have an answer for you. I've never run into that, and Hal Kreider is, he is the boss at that election, and he'd be the one to ask.
I'm with Tim. My recommendation was going to be that we have our superintendent write the letter with the copy from the lawyer to our moderator, and then it's his job to-
And get permission for whatever.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's something that could be done.
Yeah, no, I agree not to cross that all out. I think that looks worse.
Would it be, would it be appropriate to hear from the Budget Committee Chair?
I'm fine with that unless somebody has an objection.
Nope.
Ginger.
My only thought is, quite frankly, the rest of the article is just fine. It's simply a matter of what the vote was. Realistically, how many people look at the votes before they decide which way they're going to vote? I think you're going above and beyond what you need to do. If someone looks at that and says, "Wow, 124 to zero," or whatever the count was, and comes out and asks a question about it, as Tim mentioned, he'll be there, other people, you know, the moderator will be aware of it.
You should make sure Hal is aware.
They can just say, "It was a misprint on the vote." To go and have a letter typed to point it out, you have a lot of people spending a lot of time needlessly checking over every other article to see if they can catch another mistake. I think it's a waste of time. Most people don't care what the Budget Committee vote was. Most people don't care what the school board vote was, because it's on the ballot and they're going to vote.
I think especially with this particular article as well, I mean, if it was a controversial article that might have been a split vote and something that's very close, then perhaps a little more information. But, under the circumstances, it was 12-0 by the Budget Committee, 5-0 by the school board.
It's $10,000 to go into a capital reserve.
So, you're just going to get in touch with Hal and maybe let him know and see what he thinks, too?
I can touch base with Hal.
So, the key word is if somebody walks out of the booth and says, "Hey, what's this?"
I certainly-
That's fine.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Lovely. Anything else you have?
That is all I have.
Okay, anything else for our superintendent? All right, so new business, we've already talked about the NAC program. So, our town administrator, in opening public comments, asked about a survey and being able to distribute that via students. Discussion, motion?
I would think any survey we'd want to at least approve first, before we did anything, but in- did anything, but in general, I don't have a problem with it.
No, we've done it in the past, I just don't want anybody to think that we can guarantee that all the kids will pick it up off the teacher's desk, but we've done all these type of things before, surveys, and have the kids pick them up or a teacher pass them out, but...
My, um, my request would be, I don't, I don't care so much about distributing it through the school, I do agree that I, we, we should, this body should, um, see it and approve it before it gets distributed through the school, like I think we would request anything. Um, I would just request that the distribution of it not become any burden on anybody in the building, so in terms of copying, in terms of teachers and how and when it gets distributed to students, I don't want that to become an administrative burden of any kind for the staff in this building.
From the non-technical guy, would it be fine to just put it on an email and have them take an email survey?
That's what I would say.
Between the town, town website and our website?
The last survey that went out, apparently, not everybody's been able to access, so...
Okay.
So I'm not sure if, if everybody understands what the survey's about. We've been working on a master plan for about 400 years now. And there's a little pressure being put on the group doing the master plan to, could we finalize this and, and, and end it? So I was not aware that Joe was coming in for this request, so I, I, I don't know a whole lot more than that. We are trying to, so we did this four years ago, we sent it out via The Sun, um, and some other methods. We received back, um, a disheartening low amount of, of participation in trying to determine what this town wants for the next 10 or 12 years Northwood to look like, and, and that's what it's all about. It's really not a survey about school or anything else. So I, if I understand Joe correctly, what he's just looking for is another avenue to get these into the home, so maybe we would get more response than we did the last time we went around this, uh, four years ago, is, is what it's about, so...
No, I think it's fine, I just, I don't want it to be a burden on anybody in the building if we're asking it to be distributed this way.
Yeah, the, the burden is not the thing, I, I, I understand that. Um, wanting, and, and I don't really mind if the board wants to look at it and approve it, but it's just, it's about, you know, what's, businesses do you want in town, that kind of a survey? You know, where, where do you think business should be allowed to be and things like that? It's, it's not school-related, really. We're just looking for another.
But it still needs to come to us, I think, just because we're distributing it through the school, and if there's any questions from parents, then I think it should.
Yeah, just, just to be clear on, on, from a school standpoint, on things that are sent home and things that aren't sent home, we have, we get a number of requests for sending things home through the kids, the children, and we've consistently had a, a location where people could, um, leave information in the office, so we're not picking and choosing which goes home and which doesn't go home. But we've also been very consistent that any school programs, certainly that's appropriate, as well as any town entities such as the recreation program as well. Private entities, if somebody were to come in and say, "I've got a judo class or a karate class," or whatever it is, then we, or a summer camp, uh, we don't pick and choose to advertise for those types of things. We simply make that information available should parents ask for those types of things. But, um, you know, I think in this particular circumstance, it's a town entity, much like the recreation department, it would be appropriate.
Question? I have no problem with the distribution, I guess I would have a question about, are we going to collect them? Are the kids going to bring them back to a spot in school, do a teacher, collect them, tally them, I mean?
Well, that's where I just said, I don't...
No, they were, the last time, they were mailed to the town hall.
Okay.
The last time, we put it in The Sun and, and, and they filled it out and folded it, and it was, it was stamped and, and...
But Joe said earlier that he wants, yeah, Joe wants the kids to bring them back here, and he, and the incentive would be, and that was the thing that my question was, is that, yeah, there would be like a pizza party or something, but I, that's against the policy now. So, you know, he wanted, but he wanted to do a prize for the, the classroom that brought back the most, um...
If seven or eight of us brought them back, we may have a high number of eight of them.
So we want the pizza party, yeah. Are we included?
Are you exempt, are you...
I will say, if, if families are expected to mail it back, you have less chance of them being returned than if they can be sent back to school, or, or ideally, I would prefer to see things be as paperless as possible and, um... A survey monkey through, but, um, I don't know if, can we do, is that the same, like as having the kids take them home, doing the survey monkey if Joe was to send it and we had it sent out through the Northwood alert now system?
You, you could still send it out that way, yeah. I, I mean, I think with, with the, with the feedback that you, you've given and the request that I'm hearing about wanting to review the document before it goes, maybe it would be appropriate for this to come up at the next meeting with Joe having the document in hand and, and how he's planning on getting it back, knowing that we don't want it to be a burden on the school.
Well, then I just thought, as you said, the rec program sends out their thing, we don't review that when it goes home, I mean, so if this, as long as, you know, I guess that's the question too.
Doesn't sound like a controversial, we've had the surveys, I've seen them, as Tim said, they've been in the paper years ago and things, so, yeah, I don't have a problem.
I guess, the question is, is do we need to? I mean, because we don't review the, we don't review the rec po, you know, the rec book every time it goes out to the kids and that goes out.
Maybe we should.
Right, and that, that's, that's what popped into my head, is if we're saying that we should be reviewing things and we're not, um, but I guess that's a question for Joe also, is, you know, if we send out a survey monkey through the, the email system, if that's, um, another way of doing it also.
If you, if you approve it in, in, in theory, then, you know, you could direct Joe to meet with Wendy or me and finalize it and get it done.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep. Are we okay with the town administrator speaking?
Oh, yeah.
Aye.
Okay, so I, I understand, I didn't want to cause, um, more of a burden for your teachers than they already have, because they have a lot on their plates, I understand that. So what I was thinking, and I don't know if it's right or not, this is the first time I've tried this, um, stack of surveys to the teacher, however they get out to the kids or to the administrators, however it gets to the kids, I don't care, um, your choice. Yellow cardboard box in, in the classrooms, kids put your, put your cer, your completed survey in there, and then, you know, I can come and just pick up the boxes. That's...
We have a homeroom envelope process that would make the distribution, the collection relatively streamlined, because we've done it for other things where we just, we have a homeroom envelope process that we put things in envelopes and we distribute them to teachers. Teachers, if they're collecting something, they put them in the envelope, we, we deliver them to the room and we collect them from the room. So that cardboard box thing would be taken care of with the envelope.
Oh, that's perfect.
And I've done this in the past with the youth groups and things, a suggestion was made to me, and then I'll make it to you, is I grouped all the forms I wanted for the baseball league, and I put, Mrs. Smith had 10 in her class, Mrs. Jones had 20 in her class, so I had a group for Mrs. Smith, a group, and that way a teacher wasn't trying to go through a box counting, I need, so I was just, and we're good, because then every teacher got, was no big deal for the teachers to get them at that time.
Though, that's easy.
We have that list, we can give you that list of numbers.
Yeah, and this, this survey's not controversial at all.
No.
It's, what kind of businesses, where do you want things to go? What services can we improve? And, and thanks, guys, I really appreciate the help if you go forward with this. We're trying to, as, not to be ageist in any way, but older folks tend to be more active in town, and these, the, the parents of younger children, I'm, I'm really trying to find out what they want, because they don't, they're not as active, I don't get responses back from them, they don't come to town hall. So this is a, this is one of the best ways I think we can, we can find out what people want right now.
Facebook, which I know you're on. Okay, um, we should probably have a motion for this.
Motion to allow...
Well, I mean, are we expecting them to come back and we're going to approve it?
I think we're letting our administrators approve it, is that what we came up with?
I'm fine with it.
Is that the motion I think?
Yeah.
Because then we're going to slow the process down by weeks, though.
So motion to allow... Thank you, town administrator, to pass out a survey via the, the...
Work with the administration to distribute a survey regarding the town's master plan.
Joe moved.
Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any other new business?
I do, yes. So I'm referring to page 17 in the recent form that came out. On the left-hand side is a letter, I thought her name was in here, uh, vote yes, Karen Davidson, vote yes on school warrant Article 4. Um, this is an article in Nottingham. My interest in this, um, her math is just awful, but that doesn't matter. The Co-Brown contract gives our town a 3% discount on tuition is, um, all I'm really interested in. I've done a little bit of checking on this, and certainly the superintendent and so would, would know more. It is my understanding that if this contract is approved, or this warrant article is approved in Nottingham, that they will get a 3% discount, so far that's what I'm finding out, on the $15,123 cost to go into Co-Brown. I'd like to know if that's true or not.
What is the warrant?
So, and, and, I'm sorry?
What is the warrant article?
It's, it's a warrant article.
In Nottingham.
This has been a battle for several years in Nottingham. Up till a couple of years ago, Nottingham allowed parents to send their kids to either Dover or Co-Brown, they had to pay, if they sent them to Dover, they had, I mean, to Co-Brown, they had to pay a differential. At the last I knew, it was like $2,600. The school board has wanted to have the town, and in fact, they have used the town money to pay for the Co-Brown and the Dover, whichever way you go. I, that's not my fight, it's, it's Nottingham's, I, I have no skin in the game, I don't care what the town does. My only concern is that...
What was this article, warrant article saying, though, that, that they want to do that?
The warrant article is just saying they want the town to approve, um, town money being spent, whether you're, on the whole tuition, whether you go to Co-Brown or to Dover. Did I have that, is that basically right? Am I saying that correct?
Well, kind of. The, the warrant article basically is for a long-term contract with Co-Brown. Right now, there's a memorandum of understanding in place for this year, there's a memorandum of understanding in for next year, uh, and after that, there's nothing. So this is basically a seven plus three, a seven-year contract with a three-year extension to it.
And, and my understanding, and, and so that's my only question, if the con, if the warrant article is approved in Nottingham, are Nottingham kids going to go to Co-Brown cheaper than our kids? That's all I want to know. I'd like a yes or no, I don't want it tonight, I would like to know if, if, if that's what's going to happen.
But do, do you want it tonight?
Sure, yes, I would. If you know the answer, yes, I would.
I, I believe the wording in the contract is that it is a, a 3% discount or this year's tuition, whichever is less. So the existing tuition right now, or next year's tuition with a 3% reduction.
For the life of the contract?
No, that's year one.
That's year one.
Year two, it's a 2%.
Right.
And then after that, there is no difference.
This was an incentive that Co-Brown gave to them?
It's an, it's basically a two-year incentive.
So you said you believe, and I, and I'm looking for a definitive answer, are, if this warrant article passes in Nottingham, are the Nottingham students going to be allowed to go to Co-Brown at a less rate than Northwood students have, who have supported that school for the last 100 and more years? I, I'm just, that's, I, I think it's a fair question.
It is, I agree with you.
You know, I, I just think it's a fair question, is, is that's what's going to happen? I understand, all the high schools are looking for kids, I got that.
For, for, for next year and the year after, next year would be a 3%, year after would be a 2%. So the answer to that would be yes.
15,123, so you're, you're sure yes?
Yes.
So I have a sincere problem with that.
I would then, I agree with you, and then I'd say, "Well, let's wait and see if it passes," and then if, uh, Co-Brown has a new type of contract, and it's only 10 years, I think they had us and, uh, Strafford were kind of like, "It's 15 years and nothing," but it could be a 10-year one.
I have the contract right here, so I had Dr. Gdamski bring me a copy of the contract. Uh, 21st, 20, I didn't even look at how long it is. But this started on the 21st day of June 2010. Where's duration? That really, I was looking whether we, we, we have, I mean, if I was here, and I probably won't be when this is over with, I would certainly make in a new contract that, um, we get the same as the, whatever the lowest rate is, we, we would get that. You know, we, we have supported that school forever.
My, my view right now is Strafford and I, uh, Strafford and I, I'm sorry, Strafford and us have the same contract and we pay the same rate. Uh, we had to change that, because Strafford had a better contract than us when I was involved in it, and we got to change to be the same as Strafford.
No.
But then again, Strafford put in a new contract a year or two again after us, so I don't know if it changed.
Okay, so this is 10 years, so the answer is it ends on June 30th, 2020, but I, all I'm, my only concern is, and, and, and if so, then I'm going to suggest to the board that we, we, we register a complaint.
All right.
I would be very unhappy to find out, we're talking 106,000, where's my math, sorry? We're talking 106,690 dollars, we're not talking peanuts here.
Yeah, you're right, I'm glad you brought it up.
So, so I would be very, very unhappy to learn that our students, we're paying more to send a student to Co-Brown than anybody else out there. I would be very unhappy to find that. And apparently, that's a fact, and, and if that's a fact, uh, I, I just personally think this board should register our complaint of, of the unfairness of that.
I think you're right, though, Dave, we need to wait and find out if it passes first, and then...
That's fine, if you want to wait, but regardless, I, I am always going to, I, I, you know, I love Co-Brown, I really do.
If it doesn't pass, then it's a moot point.
I understand it's a moot point, but that they would offer somebody else, somebody else's students to go to their school for less than Northwood is very, very disquieting to me.
It's business.
Well, it might be business.
I assume there's nothing in the contract about...
No, I looked, that, that, that was what I was looking for, but, I, you know...
It may be something that we just want to put in the contract for next time we're negotiating.
Well, I understand, yes, but that's four years away.
I don't know, let's say that we can do about it now, though, I mean...
But, you know, I, still and all...
But if it does pass, then, then we can at least make, you know, like you said, we can at least make it known that it's...
No, I, you know, if, if they're going to give another school a 3% discount, then by golly, I think we deserve that 3% discount, that's what I'm saying. We, we send all our kids that are, we have forever, and, and I'm never going to suggest, because I'd run out of tail, tarted and feathered, run, run out of town, tarted and feathered, that we go anywhere else, but it's still not fair, that, that some other school could send their kids to Co-Brown for less money than we're spending. Fusses me a lot.
Any other new business? Under old business, we had the parking lot item, was your hand up, Keith?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Dave, you guys were both.
Relaxing.
They're fixing their hair, yeah.
Waking myself up.
So, the parking lot items on here, I don't know that there, um, I don't know that there was necessarily anything on here to discuss, although develop the school board timeline calendar in the spring of '26, that's something that we're actually doing now, so I would think that could probably come off. Um, I, you know, if at any point anybody wanted to add on to this, have at it.
Well, do we want to add on the, the Co-Brown tuition thing onto the parking lot, just so we don't forget about it?
Sure, good one. Verify, verify Co-Brown tuition payment.
See if we, see if we want to formally complain or something.
Um, well, I would think that that's not necessarily a parking lot item, I would think that's something you just may want to add to the next agenda.
Put it on the next agenda.
Certainly not something I'm going to forget.
No, but it's, it's something for the next agenda, or the, I mean, the, the election will be over at that point, you'll know the answer.
I'm sure I'm going to have five calls tomorrow morning, now, now that I've publicly talked about it, but it's, it's very upsetting to me.
The, the idea behind the parking lot, um, and you can all do with it as you please once I'm gone, um, the idea was just those kick-the-can items to not lose sight of the, I'm gone, the idea was just those kick the can items to not lose sight of that, I think this is something timely enough that it just goes on the next budget, I mean, the next agenda. Okay, so then with this draft, school board responsibility, timeline, whatever, Tim wanted to come up with a name for it, at our last meeting, it was agreed that everybody would review, and if you had any thoughts or changes or input, that you would have gotten back directly to Dr. Gdodamski with that. So, you know, I don't know if you, if you still want to consider this draft, or if everybody's comfortable with it and wants to use it. I I would consider it a living document, I think over time, changes are gonna want to be made and things will come up that you'll want to add, but I think this is at least a starting point for folks, and I think as new members come on to the board, I think it'll help them just in terms of understanding the timeline and and commitments for things over the course of a year.
Is this something you think we'd want to have in our packets going forward, so that we can refer to it, like each each meeting, or?
It has been in the packet.
I know it has been, because we've been talking about it, but, I mean, is that gonna continue? Should we keep doing that?
Well, I think that we talked about it last meeting, to to leave it in the packet, so we can only refer to it, so.
I think the improvements are great, but I agree with Karen, this is a living document, and I think every time we have a meeting and something comes up and it's not on here that we need to do yearly, it should go on there immediately, you know, and and just keep, I I'm assuming you have it on a computer and it's just gonna be at another line at the appropriate place.
Right.
You know, so it's it's, I think it's a great way to kind of keep track of what we're doing during the course of the year.
Anything else regarding the timeline? Any other old business? Okay, future meetings, the next big important date for the entire community is Tuesday, March 8th, please remember that it's voting day, voting will take place at the Parish Center at St. Joe's, you can vote between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. The next regular school board meeting is March 17th, there will be at least one new member on the board, and that will be the reorg meeting. March 28th is the joint school board meeting at 6:15 at the SAU office, just a reminder, please, attendance has been poor, and this attendance at joint board meetings is as much a responsibility of board members as attendance at the Northwood board meetings. April 7th at 6:30 is the first meeting in April, and April 21st is the first, or the second meeting of the month for April.
Can I just, yeah. Can I just add, the the March 28 meeting for the joint board, again, that is, that is the first meeting of all of the reorganization with all of our new board members, should there be any. So it really is an important meeting, because we're gonna be reorganizing the joint board and have some discussions as well, so just want to reinforce it's important to be there.
Any closing public comments? No? All right.
I was just gonna point out that March 16th is the next budget committee meeting.
Okay, so whether this is right or wrong, I guess it doesn't matter at this point, I do have some comments that I would like, as a member of the public, to share. It is my last meeting, it's been an interesting ride the past three years, so thank you to everybody who voted to put me in this position, and I, it's with mixed emotions that I am not running again. It'll be nice if I'm Thursday nights back. I just think some things for this board to be aware of and maybe to consider and to really look to address in the future. I think it's important to make sure that the board is getting real input from the building. I I'm concerned that the reports that we get, it's, the positive stuff is wonderful and it's really great to celebrate the things, the positive things that are happening in this building and the contributions that the staff are making to the education of our kids. And I had pushed for those kinds of updates in the past, and it was hard to get that. I think we've gone maybe too far to the extreme. I think the board needs to really make sure that we're understanding what is actually happening in this building and where are the opportunities, because I think we hear too much about the positive, and I I recognize how silly it sounds, it's, it is to say that. But there's also opportunities and challenges in this building that we as a board aren't hearing about in this forum, we're hearing about it on the streets, and I don't think that's appropriate, and I think our job is to be addressing and to working with administration to address those, and we can't if we're not getting honest feedback about it. I also think the board needs to really look further into the RTI program in this building. We've heard some wonderful updates, and I do think some great progress has been made, but it's not fully implemented in this building. I I know that there are teachers that have pushed back and have refused to implement in their classrooms, and that's a travesty. I also think that we haven't, I I know there's still work happening, but focus needs to begin at the other end of the spectrum for those children that are bored. I think a lot of the behavioral problems in this building are a result of children that are not engaged and bored. So I would hope that the board, as you go forward, would continue to probe and to to look to address RTI. I think the biggest opportunity in this building for the sake of our children is curriculum, and I think that's something that, again, I'd encourage the board to really focus on in the next year. Certainly, the the position that's in the budget, but there's a lot of other legs that come under curriculum that I do believe need to be addressed. And I also think leadership in the building is a huge opportunity that could have tremendous impact going forward. I think some other opportunities, I know when I first came on the board, there was a, the relationship with the budget committee was horrible, there was a lot of distrust, and I think we did, we worked hard and we made progress in rebuilding that trust. I feel that slipping away a bit, and I would encourage the board to really consider that as you look to reorganize and put a new member or or any member on that committee, to make sure that we're we're careful, that that relationship's a really important relationship to the success of budgets passing and all those other financial things that we as a board need to do. And I would encourage board members to to work more collaboratively as a board. I think issues that come up or concerns with things need to be addressed here. If something, buddy doesn't agree, then make a motion to change things, but to not address it here and then to go out and address it elsewhere, I think is a shame. And I also think it's important, as a board, we are responsible for the administration, and we have a responsibility to set clear direction for the SAU. If we want things done, or if we want numbers to come in at a certain range, then we have to communicate that, they're not mind readers, and it's a shame to expect people to live up to expectations that haven't been clearly communicated. So I've probably gone over my three minutes, thank you for listening, I appreciate it. Do we have a need for, oh. Thank you, I appreciate that, that means a lot. Do we have a need for non-public tonight?
We can wait.
Okay.
I just want to thank you for your service for the last three years and the effort that you've put in.
Thank you.
And the direction you have given us as a chair, it's been, it's been a pleasure serving with you.
Thank you, I wish you all the best of luck, and you won't get rid of me, I still have kids in the building for the next two years, so.
You sit in a different seat.
Although it may be more fun over there. Okay.
If you didn't read it, there's also another really nice article in the Sun about RTA, you should dig it out and look at it, RTI, excuse me, you should dig it out and read it.
Thank you.
And the value it has.
And I, don't get me wrong, I I don't want anything I said to be misinterpreted, I think RTI is hugely valuable when it's implemented fully and properly, and when it continues to expand to include not just children at the lower end, but all children throughout the spectrum. All right, gang, with that, I guess let's have a motion to adjourn this shindig. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.